Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the November fourteenth Board of Selectments meeting. Read the agenda. Seven o'clock, we have citizens input. Seven oh five, SEMREC discussion vote intermunicipal agreement between the town and SEMREC. Seven twenty, public hearing, Board of Assessors. H Simons, R. Scollins, classification hearing. Seven fifty, selectmen's update. Eight o'clock, Town Manager's update. Eight ten, Assistant Town Manager's update. And we have a bunch of action items. I believe it's my turn to do the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. A little bit after seven. Is there anybody here for citizen input?
No.
Winner, winner, chicken dinner. Yep, you have to come up.
I'm back at Stephen sixty-three Mechanic Street. Who do I talk to about traffic in town?
Well, it has us to start since you're here.
I know you oversee the police department. I've already been in touch with Sean Buckley because I called the chief and I guess he's the new traffic officer. I don't know what his rank is. Sean Buckley. Sean Buckley, yeah. So he's already been absolutely wonderful in the past week. But I wanted to find out. My mother lives in Randolph. The whole town of Randolph went to twenty-five miles an hour in the entire town except for where posted. No, it has done the same thing. I go to work, I drive through Milton. Milton's got speed signs up. They're solar signs. I have pictures of them. I left my posters out in the car because I didn't want to bore you with all those posters that I started with last year. But I wanted to try and find out about the traffic. I also have been involved in walking. I mean, I live on Mechanic Street, so my neighborhood is the center of town. And when I walk up here, nobody stops for you in the crosswalks. I was talking to Jack Offalet. He and his wife walked during the day. He has trouble with people stopping to let them cross the street. And now we've got this new proposed expansion knocking down those two houses and putting up sixty-seven housing units. So now I'm back about the traffic issues and the speed. So I wanted to know how do I proceed?
Well, there are two ways to address that. I'll try and respond on my behalf. I mean, the two ways to proceed, one is to do another analysis of the traffic on Mechanic Street to see where, how much the traffic has actually changed from the last time we looked at it to now. The second is to talk with the police department to see what kind of patrols they're running there currently. And also to do, to see what kind of postings are existing and to see if any signs. Last time we had this conversation, we actually changed signs. So we took care of that issue and we also did some analysis of the, of the traffic on that road at that time. So I'd like to see what kind of additional remedies can be made available. I'm not sure how, I'm not sure how Norwood and Randolph are doing twenty-five miles an hour without some, and there might be special legislation to do that because I don't, I think it's thirty is the standard unless it's acted on otherwise. Not sure if that's a local requirement or a state requirement. So I'll have to check on that.
Okay, all right. I can check on that.
Yeah.
I'd be happy to.
Sure.
Yeah, Mechanic Street has become the exit, the new alternate exit on the highway for everybody that works at the stadium. And they don't take a right at Chestnut Street, which would make it much easier for them to get to where they need to get. The signs point them straight up Mechanic Street. With the expansion of, like I said before, Cumberland Farms went from four bays to, I don't even know, twelve, ten, twelve. So the trucks, the delivery trucks are whipping up Mechanic Street. I love where I live and it's my neighborhood, but it's become a main street. And anytime there's a problem on ninety-five, everybody gets off Mechanic Street and starts to funnel through town. They don't care how fast they're going. So.
You know, I'm being entirely honest with you. There's not a lot we can do about those situations, but we can, if we can try and regulate the speed and we can see if in fact there are ways to further discourage speeding along those roads. Speed is something that can be controlled to a degree. We can't control the number of cars. I mean, that's an issue.
That I know. I understand that. Okay, so I.
I'll be happy to, I'll be happy to sit with you and I'll try, I'll have a department meeting tomorrow morning. I'll speak with both the chief and the Public Works Director to see if in fact there's steps we can take. And I'll be happy to talk to you tomorrow afternoon if you want.
Okay.
Feel free to give me a call tomorrow.
And just so you all know, there's still no crossing sign at the bottom of the hill at the high school at the crosswalk where you've always held your meetings. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So apparently it can be done through a town meeting action if that is in fact the town, the.
I just looked it up. Milton did it during, during town meeting.
You can request a lower speed limit.
That could be a Warren article probably.
For consideration.
In the May of two thousand seventeen.
Well, it's a May meeting. That would give us plenty of time to investigate and.
To consider it.
Yeah, I would think we'd, we'd want to have a couple of discussions on that.
Oh, no question. I think it's requires.
That impacts a lot of things. A lot of people.
Right.
And they had a neighborhood, it looks like they had East Milton Neighborhood Association Traffic Committee. So they had a formal committee that was, you know, interested citizens and I think one selectman was involved as well.
We'll look at it.
Okay.
All right. Seven, seven-ten, I'll take the seven oh five SEMREC, discuss vote intermunicipal agreement between the town and SEMREC.
So happy to just explain this. This is another, it's another piece of our initial startup process that we were doing for, for the SEMREC program. The Foxborough was the, the initial grantee for the SEMREC grant. And as such, we're housing the director here temporarily and we're also, so the, and the grant actually, the grant funds will actually come to Foxborough. So because until we actually have a place which we will call SEMREC, which we hope to have sometime in twenty nineteen, maybe even before that. So we're housing the funds here. So what this hat, what this means is that the grant actually comes to Foxborough. And so we, in order to pay for it, this is a reimbursable grant. So therefore, we have to front money to do that. But I'm not, but the proper way to do that is to have an intermunicipal agreement between SEMREC and Foxborough to do that because the funds will go to SEMREC, but Foxborough has to do that. So the proper step is to have an intermunicipal agreement that allows us to do that. So this is what this does. The SEMREC board took up this action yesterday and they voted to approve it and to send it to, and send it to this board for consideration. The, you know, actually I signed it because I'm chairman of that, that committee. So we took that action yesterday and so it's there before you tonight. So I'm happy to take any questions. I reviewed it, I reviewed it with Town Council. I've also reviewed it with, with Randy and it's the appropriate action that we should be taking.
I have several questions. Why is the grant, if all four towns are going in this, why is the money coming to Foxborough? Why are, why are we the ones?
Well, somebody had to take the lead and the only, at the time, don't forget, there was, the time we were doing it, I think Mansfield was lost its town manager and then, and so did Eastern at the time. So they, they had no, no person in charge. We were, so we started the process working with, with all four towns and so we basically said, well, somebody's going to be the director lead, so we might as well do it. So we agreed to do it. And there's really no impact to us by doing this. All the money comes back to, through the grant. And the grant is already approved. So we know, the money is already approved and it's coming to us. So we just have to take this one step.
Is that why it was added so late onto the agenda, an article, a thing like this?
Well, the SEMREC board didn't meet until yesterday, so we wanted to try and get, try to get it approved.
Is there a time crunch on getting this done?
Well, we want to get the director paid at some point.
He's gone.
He's, he's actually on, he's working now and it's the appropriate step to, to get him paid, so.
My thought is any, I mean, the document that is on here, to me, is an incomplete document. It's not an exhibit A. Just says refer to exhibit A and it's a blank page.
So exhibit A is, that's, the director is so new, he's preparing the actual budget now for that process, so.
So how can we vote on something that?
Well, the only thing we're approving is the actual concept of, of taking, of fronting the money and then having the, and then the money coming back to the town through the, through the grant. So the only thing that we're approving right now, and I'll have that for you, in just a matter of, you know, a matter of a few weeks, we'll have an actual budget in place, is to actually, because I need to pay him at some point. He needs to be, he's working now for us. So and it's like a chicken and egg type of thing, which comes first. And I have, I had to make sure all these steps were followed in order to get this in place.
So you want us to vote on something we got twenty-four hours ago?
Right. It's been vetted through Town Council. It's been vetted through all four towns. All four towns have agreed to it. All four, you know, all four, four board members have agreed to it. So, I mean, I wouldn't put anything in front of you. I mean, I'm chairman of the committee. I wouldn't do anything.
No, and I'm not questioning that, but it's like this, you know, we post our document, our, our agenda on Friday and then to have this added where it's an actual contract that you need our signatures on, we don't have complete information that was posted. I'm not comfortable voting on it tonight.
Well, like I said, the only thing that's missing is the exhibit A, which is to be, is being developed as we speak. The only thing that's going to be paid right now is really just the salary. And maybe Randy can try to help you with that question. Whatever your pleasure is.
Good evening. The agreement here is really just belt and suspenders for the town. It is a reimbursable grant, meaning whatever funds the town puts out, we are going to receive back as a grant through the grant account. But in order for us to legally pay the director, there's no, we have no authority, you know, to do that unless we get this belt and suspenders that is basically going to put the other towns on the hook, you know, for any costs that we don't, we don't get, you know, reimbursed for. And it's similar to like a chapter ninety grant, like a road grant. It's reimbursable, you know, big numbers and we have to spend the money first and then we receive, after submitting documentation, we receive the funds later. So this is, that's how this is going to work. The director's salary is reimbursable, but what this will do is this will bind the other communities further with the fact that the town of Foxborough is fronting the funds. And Mansfield did this for the MFN sewer agreement. They did that, you know, for the, for Mans, for Norfolk and, I mean Norton and Foxborough.
They took the lead in that particular situation.
What's the total size of the grant that we're talking about?
Million and a half. And that's just.
That whole million and a half is coming to us and we're, did we know that?
Oh, yeah. It was, we, we applied for a five-point-four million dollar grant.
Yeah, but I mean, I thought during that whole process, it was the collective group was applying.
Well, they did.
They did. Initially, you know, we, we looked to set this up as a separate entity, which ultimately it will be. We already have a separate tax ID for SEMREC and we actually have a, a bank account for SEMREC, you know, with nothing in it. But the way that the E nine-one-one grant works, that the director has, has learned is that for this grant, because Foxborough was actually named on the grant, for this year, the funds have to flow through Foxborough if they're going to be reimbursable. For the following grants that come after this, those will be set up under the now SEMREC tax ID that we have and we, the town won't be, won't be sort of the adversary of funds. SEMREC will be its own entity, but because Foxborough was named on the grant as the, as the host, you know, we needed to receive the funds so we can prove that we paid them out and E nine-one-one would refund us.
So the entire grant will flow through to town?
Just, just this particular grant, just the first year of the grant, the one and a half million. After that, the grant will be applied for under SEMREC now that it's formally established and it's got its own tax ID and it'll be separate and apart, you know, from all four towns.
So it's, it's like, as I said, it's a chicken and egg thing. So at some point, the initial phase has to be, somebody has to take the lead on it. And the, in the sewer process, the Mansfield took the lead on that. We followed suit and did the same thing, followed, followed their lead on it. In this case, everybody's following our lead on this. And on top of that, I've had, I just spoke with the, we had the E nine-one-one director. He was here last, last week to review the terms and confirmed everything I've just told you.
I guess I don't have any issue with the whole funding and the reimbursing. My issue is this getting posed, put on our agenda last, well, a little over twenty-four hours.
Well, we were, we were supposed to have the meeting last week and it was supposed to have the meeting, it was supposed to be on Thursday. And what happened was the, one of the towns failed to post the meeting properly. So we had, we had to change the meeting to Monday at the last meeting and I didn't feel comfortable in putting that on there until I had the approval of the board. So the board actually approved it yesterday. Which is the reason, the real reason why it happened.
Is something like this, are we violating any state law by adding something like a, a physical contract signing with not enough notice?
No, no. This is, this is just an agreement, it's an agreement between all four towns and SEMREC to make sure the funds are properly, properly handled and they get, and the town of Foxborough gets properly reimbursed. So we're basically binding the other four towns by doing this.
Wouldn't this fall under the items of business unanticipated within forty-eight hours of the meeting sort of thing?
I mean, that would be like a, you know, an action item type of thing. We've done that before, but I mean, you're looking for a legal signature, legal document.
Well, I didn't feel comfortable putting this on as an action item because.
No, and I don't think it is, but I also don't think that just putting it on twenty-four hours ago.
Well, I guess my question to you would be, what's your concern? Because I.
Well, my concern, A, when I read it, the third paragraph says refer to exhibit A. Exhibit A is blank. So.
So as I just explained, you know, that's in the process of happening because he's only been on the job for a week and a half.
No, I know. And it seems like we're rushing to do this and it's, I understand what we're doing, but my whole thing is we've told everybody thousands of times, we don't want something last minute. And to me, something like this is last minute and it's incomplete.
Well, it's, I apologize for the last minute, but given the circumstances, I didn't know another way to do it because given, we would have approved it last Thursday and it would have been on your agenda for Friday. It would have been no issue. Unfortunately, that's not what happened. It's beyond my control. We posted it properly. It was the other, one of the other towns that didn't.
Question through the chair. Would it make sense to have somewhere in here what the grant is? We're asking questions. How much and you're telling us it's one-point-five million, but there's no reference in here to what the name of the grant is, how much it is, what the payback is, what the reimburseables are. That information has to be someplace, right?
Yeah, it says, it says in the first whereas, being a reimbursable grant whereby funds must be first expended before they are reimbursed for the Commonwealth, the grant.
So if we expend six million dollars, two million, there's no reference other than it's a grant and it'll reimburse us for our expenses.
So if, if you, if you want, I can put an attachment B to it, which would be the actual grant itself. I'm happy to do that.
So, so there's a grant that says for one-point-five million and all the conditions in the terms for payback and what's reimbursable.
And that, in fact, Randy has all that information in his office now as well as, I can have, I can provide a copy of that to everybody too. That's, that's easily done.
Yeah. I mean, the lateness, that's one item that's being brought up, but having this that we signed it today and it says it's for a grant, other than going to your office or asking Randy, I'm a reader, everyone here wants that information. We don't want to have to do this at the selectmen's meeting on television in front of everybody. A grant with what the payback terms are, what all that stuff is, we may have no comments, but not having this stuff or, you know, even the exhibit, there's nothing to sign other than we're going to go into an agreement for a grant, period. But no information.
Well, I do have the grant document. I'm happy to share it with anybody who wants it. I might, I'll be happy to give it to you and give it to you momentarily if you'd like. I mean, it's, I guess my point to all this, I'm not going to bind the town on something that we haven't committed to as a, as a group already in doing this. So this, and the terms of that are, for the record, on one-point-five million dollars in excess of that, actually. A little over one-point-five million, so.
But it may be a hundred percent there in, you know, but why not put it here so we have it when we're signing something that we can reference something? That's all I'm saying. It's, you know, we've been through this over the last, on the E nine-one-one and the meetings and the information, but it's not here in front of us to look at. Even, we'll put it this way, if it was last minute, make it as easy as possible for us to understand it.
I was just going to say, you know, as a worst case, hypothetically, if the board was inclined not to sign tonight and sign it in two weeks, we can still pay the director and front those funds. All we would have lost over the two weeks is, you know, the, the signed commitment that should something happen with the grant and any funds we expend over the next two weeks, technically the other towns wouldn't be on the hook for them. So this is actually a belt and suspenders for the town just to ensure that, you know, if something does happen with the grant, which nobody's anticipating, that, that the other towns are going to pick up their share.
Well, I think it's, we set, if we don't do things the right way, we, things tend to get loose. And I want to make sure that we tighten, tighten this up. And I agree with Chris and I agree with Jim. Let's, let's have all the information in front of us. I don't think any of us has a problem with, with the document, but let's, let's make the document complete because nobody wants to sign an incomplete document. You wouldn't do it on your, in your, in your personal lives and certainly not going to do it in our Board of Selectment world. So I would suggest getting, getting the document a hundred percent complete. If we delay, there's really no risk other than, you know, if the other towns, if we didn't sign this document. So that's, that's the only risk is if we don't sign the document.
The only risk is if something went wrong with the grant, for whatever reason, for what we just, you know, what we expend in the next payroll on the director, for whatever reason, you know, the grant becomes non-reimbursable or the grant goes away, which I can't, which it really can't. It's a signed commitment from the state. But in that worst case scenario, you know, without this, technically the other three towns, you know, could, could skate away, but not that I expect that they would. So I don't see any huge risk. We're still going to pay the individual.
I got one more question on the, if we're paying this person or paying these for the first year, benefits, all that, is that on Foxborough's or?
It gets, it gets split up by all four towns. The grant pays for, plays a hundred percent of the salary. The only thing, the only benefit there with that really he's being assessed would be just the pension piece and that goes to all four towns. It's assessed equally to all four towns.
So the other part of this agreement is to, you know, cement the commitment that all, all the towns have to pay their twenty-five percent share of those non-reimbursable costs.
And all of those for the first year will come to Foxborough from the other three towns? The twenty-five percent?
Yes.
Well, in, in May, we'll, we'll need to have an appropriate, each town will have to have an appropriation for this now and then, and then we will be able to assess each of the towns, you know, in May for their share.
So the first year, it sounds like we're the ones that are, we're physically writing the checks, so.
Correct.
Those twenty-five percents from the other three towns will come to us?
Correct.
Correct.
Okay. And then going forward, it'll just go into a big.
It'll move into a completely discreet entity, the SEMREC entity, which now has its own tax identification number, its own bank account with nothing in it right now. And so the new grant or the next grant will then operate out of that and there'll be no need for, for this agreement.
What's the financial oversight, like the Randy Scollins's of the other three towns kind of financially or looking at that?
We actually have our own, we have our own treasurer.
For that?
For the SEMREC, yeah.
Kind of through the chair. Related but unrelated on the, related on the big picture. So the, the grant that we move forward with, there's no end date, so it's just a one-time signature. We've got that one-point-five million coming in. A few months ago, we had a question that related to a decision that we made a few years ago. I think it was, it might have been before your time, where we took the Highway Department, we took the Water and Sewer Department, we took the Parks and Recreation, kind of put it all together because it was the right thing to do moving forward. It was going to be more efficient, keeping up in times. Then the question was asked by a couple of the members, how much has been the savings over the time? And we had our Highway Superintendent Director come in and they said, well, we don't know what that number is, but it was the right thing to do. When we made that decision years ago, we were going to try and tabulate that, some type of a savings mechanism, dollars from the taxpayer. Is there a way that we can take our snapshot in two thousand seventeen for the labor overhead, bricks and mortar of what it's costing us in Foxborough to run the E nine-one-one? Move it ahead over inflation and then reevaluate it in, say, January first of two thousand eighteen, January first of two thousand nineteen and twenty? So in three years, when this E nine-one-one is running, are we paying over the top more than what we would be doing? You know, services aside, I was a little disappointed when that question was asked and we had no way to answer how much it cost us or savings from the merger.
Meaning the DPW.
Yeah. So this is the same thing on a different level. We're merging with other towns. I want to be able, you know, whoever's sitting here in three years to see where that decision brought us.
Well, let me just answer that a couple of ways. First of all, the money that we're paying, almost nearly ninety-eight percent of this will be paid for by the grant, the startup costs, all right? So the one-point-five million. So, so we, we won't be fully operational until, we're shooting for July first of two thousand nineteen, all right? So we're less than, we're about a year and a half away.
Okay.
So at that point in time, we'll actually start assessing each community, the cost of doing that. And we actually explained that during our presentations to do this initially, where it clearly showed that the savings were on two levels. One was operationally, there should be savings based upon the cost of, of having a fewer number of dispatches in total versus the number that's going on in each, each community. So right now, there's like roughly forty dispatches and this one will have about twenty-five.
Okay. So if I'm understanding, the information's there?
Yeah.
So when this, you know, if there's, if there's an attachment A with the numbers, attachment B with the contract, can there be an attachment C that's on this contract that we look back in a year, two years, in two thousand nineteen? So we have something to reference. And what I'm, what I'm looking for is what is it costing us now? And then what it's costing us in two thousand nineteen and twenty? Information disappears and new board members come, but if it's tied to a contract and what I'm concerned about is if in the future the funding goes away. This isn't guaranteed. You know, and remember through those presentations, it was a good opportunity because the money's there. Who knows what it's going to be in two thousand twenty-one? I just want to see if we have to go back where we are right now.
So I, it's fine, you want to.
Yeah, I was just going to say, you know, today, you know, Foxborough's entire dispatch operation, you know, is its own department and it has its own budget, you know, which is, it's voted on annually. We report on the actuals. Those, those don't get lost. Those are, those will be here and, you know, in perpetuity and certainly for the, for the next few years until, till dispatch in Foxborough isn't a, a department that's funding, you know, dispatches in Foxborough. At that point, I imagine, because there will be some sort of annual assessment to each of the communities for the non-reimbursable costs, that that will still be a voted appropriation at town meeting on the dispatch line. It just won't be to the scale that we. on the dispatch line. It just won't be to the scale that we have, because all of the, the majority of the funds will now be going, being collected and paid out of a different entity. That's not a Foxborough entity, it will be a joint entity. So we will have, you know, as time progresses, you know, we will have the history of what dispatch costs us, just in the appropriations and the actuals. And then as, as we migrate away from the current operation, you know, we will see, you know, the lower expense. So absolutely, you know, that, that should not be an issue at all for this town, to, to do a comparison, what it was costing us then, and what it's gonna cost us once this is up and running.
Understood and appreciated. If I asked you that same question, what was the cost for our Highway Department and Water and Sewer? They were all separate entities. So that information was explained to us that it's hard to compare, cause that was then, this is now. I, I wanna be able to compare, and if we have a document now that has that startup that, that we're leaving, without having to go back three years, you know, past to find it. I mean, three years from now, trying to look back, can it be an attachment here where it's on this, that we can look at it?
I think it's the, the present, one of the slides that we did for the joint presentation, which, you know,
Yeah, it's actually all there.
Which showed what the budgets were.
So could that be an attachment to this when we sign it?
It could be. I just, then the question is, the other three towns wanna do the same type of thing?
No, 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 that, I don't care about the other towns and what their costs are. I'm concerned, I'm asking about Foxborough.
And this agreement is between the SEMREC and the town of Foxborough.
Right.
I don't care about the other towns.
Yeah, and I think this actually, if I'm not mistaken, Randy, I think this agreement doesn't really stay in place well, just much beyond July first.
No, I think once the, you know, once this
Of two thousand and eighteen.
Grant is, is, you know, fully expended and reimbursed, then there's no further need for, for this agreement. This is just to get us through that, the first, first year.
Six months, seven months.
Ginny, do you have any?
No, just, we already have the grant. And this document is just the instrument to be, so that we can be reimbursed
Correct.
For the expenses for the SEMREC. And that's all, that's all this is.
From the, from the other communities. We're, we're already, the grant allows us to be reimbursed already from E nine one one. This is because the town of Foxborough would be fronting some funds before we get reimbursed, or some non-reimbursable pieces, that the other communities would be on the hook for their respective share, basically seventy-five percent. If A, we didn't get the grant funds, or for seventy-five percent of the non-reimbursable pieces. This locks that in.
Right. So regardless of whether attachment A is ready, we have, we don't have attachment B, it's still, this is the instrument that allow, that will allow us to get reimbursed for that.
So, as long as this doesn't impact paying the director, I, I would recommend no action tonight, until we get the remaining documents as part of this.
Well, I, the question is, will I have, I'll try and have the budget for you by then.
I don't, I don't think the budget is even material, because it's one point five million dollars. That's the grant.
Okay. So that's, that's what you're looking for, is the attachment?
Yeah.
Is the, is the grant itself?
Yeah.
That's fine. We can do that. I can do that in ten minutes. So it's easy.
I'll be clear, I'm, I'm looking for more than that, to be honest with you. I'm looking to see a snapshot of where we are right now.
Okay.
And if it's there, maybe it takes twelve minutes, cause it's the PowerPoint slides.
Yeah, that's fine. We have, we have both.
I'm not being facetious, but if we have it, and you say we have it, put it in there so it's documented when we sign it, so we can refer years back to it. That's all I'm saying. I'm not asking you to recreate and pull everything apart and do an analysis.
So it would be attachment A and attachment B.
Yeah, like I said, as long as it doesn't impact the director's pay, we can pay him. Let's get, let's get this document complete. We'll take it up at the next meeting.
Very good.
The document itself that we're looking at, is this a final document? Minus like the?
Minus the attachments.
Minus the attachments.
Okay. There should be some sort of an end date. Maybe I'm missing it in there. And there's a couple of
Yeah, the end date would be effectively the time when we no longer need it, which would be, I don't wanna put a date on there, because I don't know the exact date when that will happen, but it could be. Yeah, exactly.
Can you ask counsel? I mean, I think that, any legally binding contract should probably have an end or that. And there's a couple of errors in this from a reading perspective that I saw.
Alright, well, I'll, I'll be happy to review those with you if you want. Good. Okay. Alright, thank you.
Being seven thirty-seven, Doc, would you open the public hearing for the Board of Assessors classification, classification hearing?
The Board of Selectmen of the town of Foxborough will hold a public hearing at the Andrew A. Gallagher Junior Meeting Room at the Foxborough Town Hall, Forty South Street, Foxborough, Mass, on Tuesday, November fourteenth, two thousand seventeen, at seven twenty P M, with the Board of Assessors, Chief Assessor, and the Finance Director, to review property valuations and the total values of all property subject to taxation in each of the four classes of real property as defined by law. The Board of Selectmen will vote on the adoption of a residential factor, and then determine within prescribed limits, calculated by the Department of Revenue, what percentage of the tax burden is to be borne by each property class. The Board of Assessors, Chief Assessor, and the Finance Director will provide information and data relevant to making these policy decisions, including the fiscal effect of the available alternatives. All interested persons are encouraged to attend the hearing, and will have the right to provide oral and written comments or suggestions. Board of Selectmen, Foxborough, Mass, Mark Elfman, Clerk.
Welcome, welcome back. We had, we had an educational meeting about a month ago.
Yes.
How this all works, so we should all be well-versed in this.
Chairman, we just need to open up our meeting again for the joint.
Okay.
Oh, as a favor? Thank you.
Great. So again, not to be redundant with, with what Suckman Elfman just read, but the purpose of our meeting here is to review the property valuations of property classes subject to taxation, and decide whether to maintain a split tax rate, or eliminate the split, or modify the split, by shifting the burden between the residential class, which is one class, and the business classes of property, which is, which are three classes, commercial, industrial, and personal property. Hence the terminology, "classification hearing." The context here is, this hearing is required as an annual touchstone along the way to having the town's tax rate set, and ultimately approved by the Department of Revenue. And once the classification decision is made by this board, the last components of the documentation will be forwarded to the Department of Revenue for final review. Assuming everything is in order, we're looking to receive a quick approval, which will allow us to mail the third and fourth quarter tax bills by the end of December, with February one and May one due dates. So that's the context. So the intent here, unless the board has, has other thoughts, is I would review the high points from the executive summary at the beginning of the presentation, which pretty much summarizes the entire presentation. And then we would have the board discuss property value changes amongst the, the classes, so you can get a sense of what's happened there. And then the Board of Assessors will make their recommendation for their tax rate split, take questions from the board, hear comments from the public, and and then hopefully move to a, to a vote by the Board of Selectmen.
Sounds like a plan.
Great. So flipping to the first page of text in the executive summary. The tax levy is increasing by two and a half million, or five point five seven percent. And that increase is comprised of the following. One point oh four million, as allowed by Proposition Two and a Half. A reduction of a hundred and fifteen thousand in decreased excluded debt due to the scheduled amortization of existing debt, and no new debt. So the total tax increase related to pre-existing property is two point oh two percent, or eight hundred seventy-five thousand on the existing levy. New growth taxes add three point five two percent to the levy, or one point five nine million. So we had, had a pretty good year this year in terms of new property value that was added to the tax rolls. We continue to tax to the limits allowed by Prop Two and a Half. However, Foxborough has no general overrides built into the levy, whereas ten out of the fifteen area communities have an average additional general override levy capacity of about four point four million. First, I'll talk about things specific to property values themselves. In our fiscal eighteen, tax little property value increased by six point seven four percent, or just under a hundred and ninety-six million. The average single-family residential values, including condominiums, increased by six point four percent. The average business values decreased by zero point three four percent. Over the last ten years, the average residential value has increased by twenty-one point three thousand, or five point three percent. The average single-family property value, including condominiums, has increased this year by twenty-five point six thousand to four hundred and twenty-five point two thousand. The average single-family property value excluding condominiums, so single-family homes, has increased in this year by twenty-eight point seven thousand, or to four hundred and forty-one point five thousand. So significant increases in residential property values this year. The residential class of property currently totals seventy-seven point four four percent of all property value in town, which remains significantly higher than the two thousand and ten baseline year. The remaining twenty-two point five six of property value is associated with the business property classes. Over the last eight years, residential properties increased from a low of seventy-two point eight percent of the total valuation in fiscal ten, to the current seventy-seven point four four percent. This shift results in a continuing trend of more of the tax burden following on residential taxpayers than on business taxpayers. However, in fiscal two thousand and twelve, the Board of Selectmen equalized this trend by splitting the tax rate, which had the effect of maintaining the tax burden split of fiscal ten. If the town reverted to a single tax rate, the tax impact to residential taxpayers resulting from this eight-year trend value shifting away from business taxpayers is two point two million, an additional tax burden alone for, for this year. Regarding the tax rate itself, assuming no split tax rate, then the tax rate per thousand in assessed value would increase by two point two six percent, or thirty-four cents for residential classes, and would decrease by ten point two percent, or a dollar seventy-five for business classes. That's if, if we went to a single tax rate. Assuming the current split was maintained, the residential tax rate would decrease by about forty-seven cents to fourteen fifty-seven per thousand, and the business rate would increase by a dollar and two cents to eighteen fifteen. Regarding the tax bill itself, and what I've provided you here is four different ways, four different options to look at as you consider setting the tax rate. So if we assumed a single tax rate, which we don't have today, the average single-family tax, including condos, would increase eight point eight three percent, or five hundred and thirty dollars, to six thousand five hundred and forty dollars. The average single-family tax excluding condos would increase by nine point three eight percent, or five hundred and eighty-two dollars, to six thousand seven hundred and ninety. The average business tax would decline by ten point seven nine percent, or about one thousand three hundred and twenty-seven dollars to ten thousand nine sixty-five. Assuming the current split was maintained, the average single-family tax, including condos, would increase by three point oh nine percent, or a hundred and eighty-six dollars. The average single-family tax excluding condos would increase by about three point six two percent, or two hundred and twenty-five dollars. And the average CIP tax would increase by about five point two seven percent, or six hundred and forty-eight dollars. Assuming a reduced split that equalizes the tax increase percentage, what I mean by this is I'm looking at the, the rate of the tax rate increase, trying to get that to be approximately the same between residential and business, which is a little tricky, because you're dealing with multiple classes of, of business property. And the personal property taxable accounts can skew the view of this because of the nature of personal property tax. It's assets that get replaced on a regular basis with short depreciation life cycles. And, and we picked up a significant amount of, of personal property assets to be taxed this year, twenty-five million in value. So that can skew the comparison. So it's, so when we, when we look at trying to commonize or equalize the rate of increase between residential and business, it's primarily focused on commercial and industrial, which is the lion's share of all of the business classes of properties. Looking at residential compared to combination of commercial and industrial. So assuming a reduced split that equalizes the tax increase percentage, average single-family tax, including condominiums, would increase by three point two four percent, or a hundred and ninety-four dollars to six thousand two oh four. Average single-family tax excluding condos would increase by three point seven six percent, or two hundred and thirty-four dollars, to six thousand four forty-one. And the average CIP tax would increase by four point nine three percent, or six hundred and six dollars, to twelve thousand eight ninety-seven. And again, that number's skewed somewhat because of the nature of personal property tax. Assuming the originally targeted split, what I mean by that is the split that the Board of Assessors determined was sort of the baseline year of split of the tax burden between residential and business. That was in two thousand and ten. And the board voted in two thousand and twelve and in two thousand and fourteen to, to maintain that targeted split. So assuming the targeted split, the average single-family tax, including condos, would increase by two point three two percent, or a hundred and thirty-nine dollars. Average single-family tax excluding condos would increase by two point eight four percent, or a hundred and sixty, a hundred and seventy-six dollars. And the average CIP tax would increase by seven point five four percent, or nine hundred and twenty-six dollars. And in fiscal eighteen, assuming a single tax rate, the top twelve taxpayers would comprise sixteen point four percent, or seven point eight two million of the tax levy. And the remaining business taxpayers would comprise eleven point three, six percent, or five point four one million of the tax levy. Next section on the last page of text here is the area-community comparisons. And in order to do fair comparisons, fiscal seventeen, which is last year, is the last year that we, that we have a complete set of comparisons. We don't have those all in for this year, so that's why I'm referencing fiscal seventeen. Foxborough's FY seventeen total valuation of taxable property was one point seven eight billion of single-family property, and that's nineteen point two percent, or four hundred and twenty-one million less than the average of the fifteen area communities that surround us at, at two point two billion. And it's, it's a function of several things, but a primary driver is the number of taxable parcels. So the number of our taxable parcels in this town is sixteen and a half percent less than the average of area communities. And that in and of itself, you know, does put Foxborough in comparison at a little bit of a disadvantage by not having as much taxable property to tax, at least on the residential side, compared to other communities. The average single-family valuation in seven, twenty seventeen was four hundred and twelve thousand, three point four percent lower than the average of the fifteen area communities. And our single-family tax bill in seventeen was six thousand two oh seven, also three point four percent lower than the average of the fifteen area communities. However, it's important to note that nine of the fifteen area communities did adopt a split rate tax structure, residential rate lower than, than the business rate. And if you recall from our, our last meeting about, about the tax rate setting process, the fact that Foxborough's values on average are three point four percent lower, and our tax bill is also three point four percent lower, given the fact that the town of Foxborough has no general overrides, you know, one would expect our tax bills to be lower, even lower than that in comparison to the other communities. Because the other communities have some pretty substantial general overrides. And so that's a function of the, the reason why it's, it's, it's not lower is the function of the, the split, the tax rate split that's ultimately chosen. You know, to, to set the tax rate. So it's, it's, it's an argument for, you know, for a, a, a more aggressive split. But I'll leave the recommendation to the Board of Assessors. I'll leave the recommendation to the Board of Assessors. Shifting the fiscal '18 tax burden from residential to business, the Board of Selectmen has the option to either maintain the single tax rate or establish a split tax rate. Shifts in residential factor, it's the term that's used, of up to 14.57 percent of the total tax burden could be approved by the board. That's the maximum for Foxborough that could be shifted, 14.57 percent. And there are some examples here. Minimum shift of 0.29 percent would reduce the average residential tax bill by just over $17 and increase the average business tax bill by about $107. A tax increase equalizing the shift would, would be 5.31, 5.13 percent would reduce the average residential tax bill by $338 and conversely increase the average tax, business tax bill by about $1,932. A 5.24 percent shift would maintain the current split, reduce the average residential tax bill by $346, again, compared to a single rate, and increase the average business tax bill by $1,975. Returning to the targeted split of a 5.99 percent shift would reduce the average residential tax bill by $393 and conversely increase the average business tax bill by about $2,253. And at, at this point, I was going to have the board discuss actually what's happened in fiscal '18 with property values, how they have changed from fiscal '17.
Thanks, Randy. So at our last meeting, Mr. Feldman asked us to maybe educate the public and, you know, some of the misnomers about their assessment. So one of the things that we wanted to just get out there at the beginning is, is that the values that you see on your assessed bill is values taken from sales during fiscal, well, it would be calendar year 2016 for your next bill that's coming up. So we do have some people who come in who are looking for abatements, who basically say, well, I bought my house last August and, you know, I didn't pay that or whatever the case may be. And that's really not what we could do. We have to take 12 months of sales, arms-length sales. Arms-length sales is typically, what that means is that it's, you know, a sale that a person will sell to another person without any undue influences. So, you know, a parent selling their house to their child for, you know, below market, maybe they're holding a note, whatever the case may be, that's not really an arms-length sale. There's no realtor involved or anything like that, so those are not allowed to be used. But these are actual sales from one party to another. So I thought that would be important to bring that up. So one of the things that Randy talked about was is the, the big decrease in the commercial industrial that you saw there. And one of the questions that I asked, and as soon as I asked it, I think I realized what the answer was, is that one of the biggest pieces that was removed from the tax rolls was 33 Commercial Street, which is the old Foxborough Company Bristol Park across from the Shell Station. So there's two buildings back there, there's Unit 50, Building 51 and Building 52. One is now bought by a religious entity, so that was removed from the, you know, that's a Class A business building that's now considered religious. And the other one was bought by the Foxborough Charter School, which is exempt in the educational. So what does that mean? Well, they still have a value. We can't tax them anymore. So now that piece of the pie now is being split amongst the, every other apostle now in the community. So with, with the split, going back with the zero split, you know, you're looking at a 77.44 percent residential burden, and the commercial industrial is 22.56. The residential value's gone up, I think everybody realizes, as soon as a, you know, lower, smaller house, starter home, if you, so to speak, goes on the market in Foxborough, it's gone. I mean, I, we have people in the community that I know, as soon as those houses go on the market, they're gone and they're being overbid for those, those prices. So the values have gone up and the, you know, the sales have gone up for that aspect. So that's gone up, but again, the businesses. The other piece with the businesses is that the IEP, the, yeah, yeah. Yeah, INEs have dropped. Well, no, they haven't dropped, I'm sorry. They have, income and expenses are basically stayed the same from years past. So those, the rents have not gone up in the business aspect and things like that, so all those coming in. And what Hana had done too, that most towns don't do, is, is that we do INEs every year. So most communities do them every three.
For their revaluation.
Yeah, every three to five years. We do them every year, so now we can get a really good base of where these are coming in as. And they're all validated by an outside consultant too. So if somebody's doing these INEs and not really putting the numbers that they should be, we have specialists that can look at that and realize that there's an error there. So those are all validated. So as we sat down with the, the comparisons that Randy did for us, so here's our, what we come up with. So we're going to share the burden, how are we going to do this? We could frame this two different ways. We're either going to increase the burden per the classes, so you either increase the burden on the commercial or you increase the burden on the residential. Or the other way to do it is, is, and what we've done in the past, is that we've increased the percentages that have gone up. The bill, the rates are going up, they do every year. So what we, we voted on three to zero is we looked at the increase equal both classes. So that one would be the current split maintained. If you look at page, was it?
Four.
Page 15. In the far left column, you'll see 1.18.
You're going for the chart?
Yeah.
Page 15.
So page 15 on the far left, right in the middle, you'll see it, the red, if you have a color print, you'll see the 1.18 CIP shift. And what that actually does is you get, for residential, you have a 3.4 percent plus or minus increase on their bill. And for the commercial industrial, if you take out the personal property, I think Randy talked about that, the personal property on the bottom of the page of page four, you'll see a 10.77 percent increase on the personal property. That number kind of skews the other ones, so for our purposes, we're just using the commercial industrial, those are the bigger of the two numbers there. And what you'll get there is, is around a 3.9 percent increase in there. So it's around a 5.24 percent shift to commercial, so we've taken the shift instead of putting all that burden, because again, we're taking 33 Commercial Street, both buildings off the tax roll. So you're either going to throw that all back on the majority on the residential or we shifted it. So that's what we actually, we looked at. So again, our recommendation for the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, it's actually 0.947556 residential factor. That's the one that, whatever one you decide, that's what you have to actually vote on.
And that's the one that the board voted on.
And that's the same, yeah, same split as last year that you did. And that, that actually corresponds to page four with the breakdown. So gives you a better look at that. We were talking about the average value increases in residential. It was, with condos was 3.4 percent and cap, and commercial and industrial were 3.9. So it's pretty fair, the split there.
Well, it's on page four, I'm sorry?
Yep. Yep. So that split that we're recommending is on page four.
There is, there is two fours in there.
Yeah.
This is it, Jim.
Yeah, go.
Page four on that. On the top, it'll say current split. FY '17 maintained 73.38 percent.
Gotcha, thank you.
So I think at this point, we're, we're ready for questions.
What was the, the combined value of the loss of those two buildings?
It was about 13 to 14 million as taxable, but now that it's split, it's actually 20 million.
With the improvements.
But non-taxable now.
So you're recommending that the fiscal year 2017, the 73.4, 26.6 be carried over to 2018?
Correct.
Same percentages?
Yes. And again, the reason for that is that the percentage of increases is about the same.
Right.
Again, we're just looking at sharing the, the percentage increases across all classifications.
In that same split from 2017 to 2018, what page does it have the average commercial and average residential tax increase? Well, the current split in 2017 carrying it over to 2018.
Page four?
Yeah, it's still back to that page four.
Page four.
Yep.
So even, even though the, the shift would be an increase on the cost per thousand, because the valuations went up, will actually be a slight increase on the taxable.
The, the total valuations of all property value in the town, residential values went up in total 198 million. Business values in total went down 2 and 1/2 million. So that's what's causing a much, much sharper shift in burden to residential this particular year.
And I think what you, you have to look at too is what, you know, again, I think I say this every single year, but, you know, that's the great thing about this being every year, because we do have, over the next year or two, you have Foxfield Plaza, hopefully that hotel will be built. But you have that being finished, you have the entire Foxfield Plaza being finished. There's a Mo's Restaurant going in, a Starbucks going in, the Fit Factory, they're being built now. And then let's look up at Patriot Place, you would now have the new Partners Building being built, that's 100,000 square foot medical building, five-story building being built as we speak. So there's a lot of new exciting projects coming online, unless, I mean, reality is reality, something is going to be coming across Route One, something, you know, hopefully sooner than later. But we're looking at, hopefully, again, that'll take some of the burden again off of the residential, and that's our goal. I mean, it really is, is, again, it's, we're trying to spread it out amongst all the classifications, but, you know, that's reality, those are coming, so that's what we're hoping for, to make up for the loss of 33 Commercial.
But I think, I think our goal, as well as your goal, is to bring that percentage share of the burden down around 70 percent, 70 to 30, 70 percent residential, 30 percent commercial, business is, is kind of like utopia. Anytime you get down below 70 percent, you know, you're going to see your, your residential tax rates going down. I mean, I look at, at the comparisons, when on Division of Local Services, I look at the comps of those communities that have the, have the split rates, and the town of Foxborough, cost per thousand is the lowest of any community within our comps that has a split tax rate.
And no general overrides on.
And no, and no general overrides. So I, I say that because there is, there is room to shift that burden to the businesses a little bit. I mean, we're not in risk of saying, oh, you don't want to go to Foxborough because they overtax you. You look at the surrounding communities and it's, I mean, you look at, you know, you can take Walpole, $20.41 a thousand, Westwood, $28 and change a thousand, Dedham, $31 a thousand, Canton's $26 a thousand. So, you know, last year we were at 17. So there is a little bit of room. You know, we want to be cautious and we don't want to punish people, but I, I think it's a little unfair that the, when a, a commercial property comes off the, the tax rolls, that the burden's borne by the residential taxpayer 100 percent. So thank you for recommending an equalized shift. But then it begs the question, can, should we do more, can we do more? Can we move it a little bit? I think that's the discussion that, that we as, as the board needs to have.
So you have a three-member board? Was it unanimous?
Yes, it is.
Okay. And remember the, the year that you presented the split versus the 50-50, you said you, and we had this discussion a lot, you were torn because private businesses versus, you know, resident, or businesses versus residential. Is it the message that we're saying, we're going to tax the business, overtax the businesses, and what is it going to do to a business coming in? So that was in 2012.
Yeah.
So in the last five years, did it have a, did it have that lasting effect or detrimental effect that it's a split now and we're taxing the commercial more than the residential? Have you seen that kickback or that, not kickback, I'm sorry, the feedback of, the, well, did it kick back to us saying, now you get what you want, the businesses aren't coming? I don't, I don't see it, but from your position, have you heard?
I, I don't actually see that either. I think you're absolutely right. You know, you look at, you know, you know, how you look at, what kind of towns do you compare us? I mean, on the football field, you know, we're enemies, but in reality, Mansfield's like the sec, our cousins. And, and I look at their huge industrial park that they have, and you drive through there, and there is, there's a lot of, you know, for rent signs and things like that, but, but, you know, and they just recently readjusted their split. And I look at, you know, you know, Fox, Foxfield Plaza, and, and people are coming into the community. The Hanover behind the 99, you know, I mean, whether you liked it or not, but man, that thing went up and that's going to be great revenue coming into the town as we speak. So there are businesses and entities coming into the town who want to come in the town. I think it's a, you know, it's a, it's a cost of doing business and then, I mean, you don't need to read the papers and see, you know, GE and things like that, they're going where the best bang for the buck and looking for, for things back from the community, but they're still moving into traditionally high tax entities, and I don't, I don't feel that we, we, we project that at all.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
On page 15, the three highlighted courses of actions, were those the three that you guys talked, discussed, debated?
Well, the, the first one, the lowest one in red, do you have it in color?
I have, yeah.
Do, I mean, that, that's when we initially, I think, 2010, went to the split rate. So that's what we compare everything by?
That's the original targeted split?
Yeah, that's where we, where we started from when we did it. And I think we've gone back to that, Randy. Did you say a couple times we've gone back to that split?
2012, 2014. And then it's kind of wiggled around that ever since.
Right.
So didn't you guys have a lot of discussion on possibly going back to that one at all or?
No, I, we honestly didn't. That's, that looks, that's too much of a, I think we felt there was too much pushing that onto the commercial. And again, I think like, you know, what Jim says, you still want to be, you know, you don't want to scare away businesses. And I think going from where we are today, back to that, you know, I think it's, is, is kind of extreme. So again, we were looking to, again, looking at, framing it, how do you want to do this? The percentages in the front far-right corner, those are your splits, that's where your, your burden is. Or do you want to take what is the, the rate going up to, and we looked at 3 and 1/2 percent, 3.8 percent is more equitable when you're looking across all those classes? So that's, that was our thought process, looking at the, all of those.
And that original split is on page six, Chris. And it kind of shows you, we were trying to average out, to be fair, residential value And it kind of shows you, we were trying to average out, to be fair, residential values, you know, saw an increase of three point seven four and six point one percent on the commercial. That's what I mean, what they'd see in the increase. So you'd be putting more back on the, you know, commercial and industrial. And to show you an example, at the current rate, I was going to make sure I have this right. It's the current rate, if we stay with it, the tax bill for residential, not condos, is two twenty-five. And this one here, if we went back to the original, would be one seventy-six for the residential. But it would be a big burden on the commercial, would go from three fifty-nine on our current rate to six hundred if we made that change to go back. So. So we did put a lot of, you know, we went over every single scenario here, and what would be the fairest.
Ask you a question on process, and it probably asked the same question last year. I don't know if it was schedule, that, the way that this process works out, but you gave us all the information, and you gave us the three options. But at no point did you put your recommendation down in writing to give to us beforehand. What's the reasoning? Is it, is it schedule, or why, why wouldn't you do that?
Well, we, I think it's, we, we would have to start this process a lot earlier to get onto your schedule, figuring that out. But we did, we received all our packets last week, and, you know, we reviewed them and then, and then we actually. The reality is, is that the odds are that, and I think Randy puts it in there, that we were going to go for a split rate. But where are, where is that split?
Yeah, but so, but you met on this and you voted on it.
What I also add though is that the values themselves, which drive all of the, the numbers, so that the property values, weren't certified until November ninth. So we try to move very quickly to then start crunching the numbers and actually show scenarios that, you know, that, you know, can be discussed and voted on. There's really nothing to discuss, other than concepts, which we had. We, you know, the boards discussed concepts before that, you know, based on what we think is happening before the values are certified with terms of value shifts. But then once we get the value certified, that's when all the number crunching, you know, happens really fast. And then we schedule the meetings, you know, to, to focus on specifics right after that.
So, so when did this, when did your board take the vote that it was unanimous to go to the same? This evening? Okay. As you say, when I see in the packet, it'll be presented to us tonight. I don't know if it would make a difference if we had that information of what your vote was, that way we'd consider it, rather than trying to do this all tonight.
Right.
That's all I'm asking.
I think, you know, technically, we could have, could have scheduled the hearing for two weeks later, even though the, the board probably would have resolved itself, you would have had, you know, their recommendation in advance. But then what that does is that puts an extreme crunch.
On the backend.
On the, on the, the finance office to then actually get this all done and get the bills out, et cetera. So we try to create a process, at least for getting the bills out, that it works. We could err on the side on giving the board more time, if you want.
Yeah, no, you actually make sense. It would, you know, if you look at it, in that aspect, yeah, I wouldn't mind sitting down and coming up with something that we can all agree on and then sleep on it and then come back and vote. But it's always the D O R and everything else, just the timing is just.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions?
No. I thought it was well presented. Public comment.
Any members from the audience have any questions or concerns, comments?
She said no.
You know, it's, it's kind of comical, but I think that's what I'm getting at, is, is we're about to make a decision. We can't rely on one person in the audience. If, if people have something to say, it, yes, they should be here. But if it was out for two more weeks, you would hear stuff, you would get something in the paper, and people would have more of an opportunity to give their input, so.
I, I have a, I have a comment on that. About a month ago, we asked the Board of Assessors to come in and do a presentation. I don't think you were.
No, you handed me, I read it, but you had handed it to me, yeah.
Do this whole presentation, all about this and the process and everything else. It was publicized. Not one person showed up.
Oh, I know, it's painful. There you go, we're saying the same thing.
So it's like, how much more time do you, do you give people to come up with, with something? Just in case? I, you know what? I don't have any, any compassion for, for people that, that say they want to be part of the process. And when you invite them to be part of the process, they don't show up. And then after the fact, they complain that they weren't part of the process.
No, I, I fully agree. This is a, this is, I mean, Randy spent ten minutes going through the, your eye spin. The summary is what's important. If you ask two people to try to figure that out two weeks ago, it's diff, it, it can't be done. But to hear the summary explained at the level that you did at the last five minutes, there's, there's a big benefit to that. If you saw this two weeks ago, what questions are you going to ask? It's like, you know, we have a X amount, how many million-dollar budget? No questions. You try to change the sign on the town common and, and everyone hits the roof. You know, people's, people's comfort level is what they can understand. This is difficult to understand. The summary is easier to understand, that's all I'm saying.
Right, but the fact that nobody went to that, that educational.
And that was really instructive.
Meeting. And Randy did a great job laying it out and, and trying to make it in layman's terms. And that would have been an opportunity for people to kind of pose their questions and then come back tonight and, and ask the questions. So, I mean, I, I don't know what else, what else we can do to.
We did, we did publicize that, that document on the website and actually presented it to Senior Men's Breakfast. Actually covered the, the highlights of that, of that document, you know, there. And I actually spoke about this process here, the, you know, the decision that the board has to make. And, you know, if you're interested, you know, this is an important meeting, so.
And cable access too. I mean, they're in high def now, come on.
Good.
You had a, your question?
I was at that meeting.
Yes.
That presentation.
You were the one.
It was a good group.
One hundred percent of the group was at that meeting tonight. All one.
I'll ask you, was that informative?
Very much so, yeah.
Yeah, and I don't think we're better or worse than other towns. It's, it's people, I don't know what it is, they don't want to get involved, they don't want to spend the time.
That's typical of our regular meetings too. Unless there's someone there that wants to meet with the, you know, the committee here, I mean, the assessors, we have no one.
I mean, all, all we can do is offer it.
Exactly.
Make, make it available. And if people want to show up, great. If they don't, nothing we can do about it.
I mean, there are people who are watching this on, on cable access, which is amazing. But they actually do, and I know them personally, and they're watching right now. And they get this, and maybe there's a group up there that, there's a lot more that do watch online. And kudos to the cable access, because they make it very easy to go and find the past meetings, so you could actually watch them again at your convenience. So that aspect is, is, so maybe, maybe the word is getting out there and they just don't, they, they feel that they're being well represented by all of us who they elected.
Yeah, you know, people may not.
That's awesome.
But people may not be able to come to a meeting, but certainly they see the selectmen at the grocery store, or at the post office. They have our email addresses, taking calls, you know, make calls. I've heard Zippo of any questions.
So there's two ways to look at that. Now, first of all, it's, it's, it's consistent with what's going on nationwide, issue number one. Number two, if it was really a problem, you definitely would have heard about it.
Right.
Well, I think the other, the other thing is, we're all taxpayers in town too.
That's right.
So whatever, whatever we decide on affects us as well. So, and we want to do.
We don't get a reduced rate.
Family and friends.
We want to do what's, what's fair and, and what's right. So I think, I think we do a pretty good job of, of doing that on a, on a regular, regular basis, so. Any more questions or comments from the audience?
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion made, second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Now we need a. Move to approve.
Yeah, we need. The motion would be to, to approve the recommendation of the Board of Assessors, or unless the board has an alternative recommendation.
No, move to approve the recommendation of the Board of Assessors.
If you could just reference the residential factor itself, that, that six-digit number.
Zero point nine.
Zero point nine four seven five five six.
Zero point nine four seven five five six?
Correct. Residential factor.
With a residential factor of zero point nine four seven five five six.
Second.
Motion made, second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Yeah, great, great presentation.
Thanks, Sean.
Motion for the Board of Assessors?
All is in favor?
Another unanimous vote.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
I want to thank the board as well as Hannah and Randy for doing that. Nice job both of you as well.
Great job.
Thanks, women.
Thanks, Hannah.
Something for you to sign after your meeting.
Okay, we're a little behind schedule. Selectmen's update, earlier this evening, we had ribbon-cutting ceremony for this new town hall. Very well attended. Thought it was nicely done. Did a good job. Last Saturday, we had the Veterans Day ceremony at the high school. Again, Mike Johns and Matt McKenzie did a great job putting that together. So a couple, a couple of good things in the last, last few days. And Jim, I know you have the turkeys.
Yeah, they're going out next Saturday. You know, the Davis kids just brought us a pile of cards to give to them. Mary Smith, teacher at the Taylor School, gave us a box, or they made them up today. So we've got a trailer of turkeys and desserts going out on Saturday to them. So thanks for everyone that reached out and donated, and another good year, so.
Anybody have anything else?
One other thing I wanted to add, this, this goes back a couple of years, and thank you for writing the letter on behalf of the selectmen. December fifth, a group of us are traveling to the Senate, to the State House, to present the state bill. Going back a few years ago, the Child Sex Abuse Awareness Committee was formed. And then we, this board made a commitment to bring it as far as we can. So there was two bills that have been kind of hanging out there. One was our local bill representing the home rule petition to increase the number of required mandated reporters from teachers to sports and Y M C A and all those other groups. That kind of took a life of its own and got approved through the House, but there was also a recommendation at the Senate to create a different bill that's statewide. And then that's what we're presenting on December fifth. So because of what Foxborough did, there's going to be a benefit to the entire state that all of the towns will have to increase their mandated reporter. So reaching out, we've got representatives from clergy, from some, some abuse victims, from the school, from public safety, to go in front of the Senate on December fifth to make that presentation. So the House approved it, hopefully the Senate will approve it, and then that bill will get passed. Eye-opening, long process, it's taken years. But I think at the, you know, the, the Foxborough didn't make it as far because they thought, why do it just for Foxborough? Because someone coming into Foxborough is not going to know the rules, so why make it different? Very happy that it's gone statewide. So hopefully it'll be a big, big advantage to the state if this thing goes through on December fifth.
You guys are in there?
We, the chairman of the Senate came to meet with us not too long ago. And it was kind of up to him to get comfortable with it. I think he's comfortable with it now. You never know what happens on the floor, but we make presentations as testimony. They'll probably take it under advisement, tweak it a little bit, but it's a huge step.
Good job.
So did that have anything to do with, I know that the chairman had sent a letter to, to.
Yeah, it did. Chairman Feldman wrote a letter basically saying, it's important to us, where is it? And it was a month or so ago?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It literally took me fifteen phone calls to find out who the best person is to send that letter to. Because you just, you don't want to send it to a black hole.
Right.
So, like Jim said, it's, it's, it's a process.
It is a process. Yeah, so, so that went, again, there was two bills. That one was for H seventy-seven.
H seventy-seven, yeah.
Which I just don't think it, it's not going to make it in. Representative Barrows basically said it's probably not going to make it. Focus on the state bill way wide.
The Senate bill? The bill I referenced was H seventy-seven, which is a statewide bill.
The state bill, okay.
The, the local bill, H seventy-six.
Yep.
Basically doesn't exist anymore.
Okay, gotcha.
So we, we, the letter fully supports H seventy-seven. And the sixteen co-sponsors of that bill were copied on that letter.
Yep.
So not only do you have overwhelming town support through town meeting, you have sixteen co-sponsors of the bill. So hopefully we get enough momentum in the, in the joint committee to, to get it out of there.
This is actually quite timely in terms of what's going on in the press these days about this very topic.
Sure, yep.
So this is a good time to have that issue surface.
Yep. And the only, I guess, say the only downside or the piece missing is it has a very wide range of people that are now going to be mandated reporters. And it says you have to do the training. It's somewhat of an unfunded mandate, because there's training there now, but, you know, people just don't do it. You know, we've embraced the entire town, we've had thousands of people go through darkness to light. There's a cost and there's an effort. I just don't know if the state has the ability to bring it to the next level. So what we're trying to decide now in that presentation is, do we present it and walk away with the victory? Or do we present it with an amendment on the floor that talks about the next step? Which may, might make people uncomfortable. So we're trying to figure that out between now and December fifth.
Next step being the funding mechanism to train everybody?
Yeah, if we say everyone needs to get trained, reasonable person, all right, what's the training process? You know, the same, same training process has been there since the sixties and seventies, it's just somewhat non-existent, so. And, and I got to give kudos to Representative Jay Barrows, who came to, has been coming to our meetings and being a huge advocate. He's done everything he could on the, on the House level, but once it's in the Senate, he's still pushing for it, but it's up to the Senate to.
Has anybody reached out to Salafini about this now?
He's going to, yeah, we did, Linda Walsh did, and we were told that he's going to be at the meeting on December. I haven't spoken to him about it, but he'll be there on December fifth as, as the new senator.
Great.
And hopefully we'll put you on the spot, but maybe you can make it as well.
Yeah, sure.
I think I was assuming you were going to be there. December fifth, yeah.
Yeah, that's fine.
All good stuff.
While we're on Selectmen's update, just one update, people on the memorial funding was still short. I told Mike we should have passed the hat out here tonight.
Pretty good, some good donations.
About nine grand short.
That's still pretty good though. I mean, how, how much, how much is total raised so far?
Fifty thousand, six hundred and thirty-six dollars.
You want to be sixty thousand?
Yeah, so we're just about there. We'll make it.
Great, thank you. Bill? So just a couple of things. First of all, thanks, I want to, I want to say thanks to everyone who really supported the effort to put that presentation on tonight. The ribbon-cutting effort was a, it was a lot of folks involved in that effort, so I want to say thanks to everyone. Particularly want to put a shout-out to Bill Kispara and to Deb Cochran for cutting that ribbon tonight. That was a special moment for both of them. Deb had spent her entire career in the, in the old building, and, and she was, she spent just last few months in this building, so she's thrilled in the new space. Bill Kispara treated this project like it was his own house. And he did a phenomenal job of, you know, even the last-minute things, like running around, putting pictures up today. That's, that was Bill, you know, that's what he does. You know, he's, he's just the go-to guy in the building. So we really, really appreciate the fact that both of them were able to cut that ribbon tonight, because it meant something special to them, both of them. So glad to be able to have them do that. The, tonight, we had, we had a couple of proclamations sent to us, both by, by Representative Barrows, who of course was in, in Boston in session, along with Senator Feeney. Senator Feeney said he will be coming to our next meeting, I believe. He's going to try and get on our, our agenda for the next meeting, so Kate, we might as well just make a note of that to make sure we reach out to him. He, he will present his own proclamation. But both legislators were able to actually get one from the governor as well, which was, which reads. was, which reads accordingly, "To the town of Foxborough, on behalf of the citizens of Commonwealth in Massachusetts, I am pleased to confer upon you the governor's citation in recognition of the joyous occasion of the opening of your new town hall this 14th day of November in the year 2017, signed by both Charles Baker and Karen Polito, Lieutenant Governor." So, thank you to both of them. We'll actually frame this in somewhere and have this in town hall, so to commemorate this day as well. Want to say also a quick thanks to, and let me just read the one from Representative Barrows. "We hereby know that all the Massachusetts House Representatives offices in serious congratulations to the town of Foxborough, recognition of the official opening ribbon-cutting of the new Foxborough Town Hall. The entire membership extends its very best wishes and expresses hope for future good fortune and continued success in all endeavors given this 14th day of November at the State House in Boston, Massachusetts by Robert A. DeLeo, Speaker of the House, offered by Representative F. J. Barrows." So, thank you to him and to, and to the governor for, and governor's office for recognizing this important day in Foxborough history. I want to say thanks to the Historical Commission, who were the, who actually selected the pictures that you see around town hall. We're not completely done. I see Ginny picked a couple out, and herself, and she was helpful in picking out the one, the Fox, the Fox picture, as well as the picture that celebrated our, we actually found some stuff in some of her, her classic materials that she's, she's maintained. So, thank you for that. So, those, we're still working on those pictures to get some real, to add a little bit of the old with the new, and to really add some real character to the building. Just to remind the two that we actually have an engraved seal that's going to be right behind the chairman's, chairman's desk, and will be, should be ready sometime around Christmas time, maybe a little bit before then, so we should be able to hang that as well. And that's, that's going to be a nice, that's being handcuffed by a veteran in town. So, we're very, very pleased to be able to have that piece. We started the budget process this week for FY18, I believe. We just set the tax rate tonight. We started the budget process again for FY18, so sort of an evolving process that we always go through. We're having our first department head meeting to talk about that process tomorrow, and we'll be keeping everybody in the loop about that. We finished, we have one more hearing before the Finance Committee for the AdCom tomorrow night, which will be held in this, in these chambers tomorrow night, to finalize the warrant for the special town meeting, which will be held on December 4th. So, again, that's to the public to make sure you know your calendar. Not a lot of controversial things on there, but we just want to make sure that everybody's, we have enough people to show up that night to get the town's business completed. So, that concludes my report.
Here, Beth?
I just have one thing for the board. I'm going to ask Caitlin to pass it down. We now have this beautiful meeting room, and a lot of people are requesting to use this meeting room. So, we worked over the last year with the, with town hall and Selectmen's meeting room and the two conference rooms in mind, with a committee made up of folks from public safety, council on aging, IT, our office, to come up with a meeting room use policy. And I'm giving it to the board tonight in hard copy to take a look at, and hoping to get it on your agenda for the next meeting, so that you can give us your comments on this. This is the latest draft that the committee has presented to you. The vehicle by which we're going to be scheduling this meeting room and the way public safety is already being scheduled is going to be through Outlook on our calendars with someone from our office as an approver of the town hall meeting rooms for council on aging, someone from council on aging as an approver, and public safety, they already have a process in place. So, this is to allow for boards and committees who want to use it, anybody who's affiliated with a town or board committee who would like it. We just want to have, have it out there. When, you can go on and view when you have access to our Outlook calendar, if the room's occupied or not. We have a timeframe listed in here, we have the capacity of the rooms, we have some guidelines. So, we'd like to run it by the board, get your feedback on this, and talk to you about it at your next meeting. The goal would be to implement this by the first of the year, so that we have a fair process for everyone to follow that's been vetted by all levels of the organization.
Just a thought, is it, would it be advantageous to run it for a couple of months to see the plus, the positives and negatives before we come up with a policy? To see how it runs and functions and, you know, to set a policy before it's even used yet, that we're missing something?
It's for all the buildings, it's not just for this building.
It's, yeah, it's, we had to formalize, public safety was having some questions about long-term use, council on aging had some questions. So, that's why we came up with this as a group.
Oh, I see, town hall, public safety, okay, gotcha.
Yeah. They had requested to talk to us about, you know, times when they had to decide between one person using it or not, or someone who wants to schedule an entire year, and what does that mean to their schedule. So, we thought with this building coming online, we'd meet with these groups and run it by all of the people who are currently managing the rooms, plus the board, to see what you thought.
We actually have had a couple of folks feel very strongly about making sure they have access to a building. You know, political meetings are really inappropriate for town buildings, so they want to use them for that purpose. And so, we, this, this policy addresses that specifically, and that's why we want you to read it and respond back to us, because we've taken a few positions here on this that we want to make sure that you're in full concert with. It's just that, you know, town buildings are supposed to be neutral grounds, so we're not supposed to take a position either way, and that's why we're trying to maintain neutrality.
So, over the next two weeks, I know Thanksgiving's in the middle of that, but if you could send us your thoughts, you can send them to me, your thoughts or your comments on this policy. We'll prepare all of the comments in a draft for you at the next meeting. It'll be on board docs.
Do you have a meeting coming up with the Policy Board?
With?
The Policy Committee?
Yeah, Policy Committee.
For this, for this meeting room?
Not related to this, but.
Oh, for the Personnel Board?
Yeah, the Personnel Board.
We had a meeting, but we, last week scheduled, but we didn't have a quorum. So, the next one is November 28th.
Is that it?
That's it. Just want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving.
That's right, thank you. Thank you for reminding me. This is the last meeting before that, right? I believe.
Yeah.
Action items? Yep. Move to approve the 10:31 17 for the Selectmen's minutes?
Second.
Motion made second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye. Move to approve an early liquor license extension for the DNN Corporation Doing Businesses Olive and Mint Ambrosia for 11:00 AM for New England Patriots Sunday Home Games on 11:26, 12:24, and 12:31, for Easter on 4/1/18, for Mother's Day on 5/13/18, and for Father's Day on 6/17/18.
Second.
Motion made second, any further discussion? Since we haven't adopted.
11 o'clock is okay, it's 10 o'clock.
11 o'clock?
It's 10 o'clock, that's the issue.
Okay. Then ends that discussion.
I was going to say the same thing.
All those in favor?
Move to approve an extended closing hour for DNN Corporation Doing Businesses Olive and Mint Ambrosia for New Year's Eve, 12:31 17.
Second.
What is the discussion, there's no timeframe? Do we have a?
Yeah, typically, there's a.
It's like 1 o'clock. It's 2 o'clock for that.
Yeah, but there's also a condition that they stay open, but alcohol's not served, and they provide food. The benefit of staying open later.
Right.
Is to give them time to.
Sober up.
I was going to say, but adapt, you know, whatever it is.
The alcohol serving time isn't extended, you know.
Isn't extended.
On this, though, it doesn't have an hour, it just says.
So, you might want to say, you might give the approval with that, that it can close no later than 2 o'clock, and last, last call for service would be 12:30, which is what you typically do.
Don't you send out a letter anyway? With that information?
If you want to just clarify for the record, that's up to you.
Yeah, I'd like to see it, yeah. So, move to approve the extended closing hours of 2:00 AM with.
Last call for service at 12:30.
Last call for service at 12:30 for the DNN Corporation Doing Businesses Olive and Mint Ambrosia for New Year's Eve, 12:31 17.
Second, that motion.
Again, under discussion, is there a, in our bylaw, does it say they have to close at 1 o'clock, or 1:30?
All the licenses, your licenses typically say 1 o'clock, Jim.
For, for serving alcohol, or the doors?
The license is usually, yeah, they have to be shut down by 1, usually. So, the issue is that you have to, you have to request an extension specifically for that.
Irregardless of the alcohol, they have to?
Yes.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Move to approve the gift donation, no, I apologize, skipped one. Move to approve the Recreation's annual Light Up the Town event for 11:25 17 from 4:00 PM to 7:00 PM.
Second.
Motion made second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Move to approve a gift donation in the amount of $135 to the Council on Aging for Dana Zizer's travel to Charleston, South Carolina from the Friends of Foxborough Seniors.
Second.
Motion made second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Move to approve a gift donation in the amount of $125 to the Council on Aging in memory of Jerry Norwood from Anonymous.
Second.
Motion made second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Move to approve a gift donation in the amount of $300 to the Boydin Library for a donation of museum passes from the Foxborough Lions Club.
Second.
Motion made second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Move to approve the gift donation in the amount of $100 to Veteran Services for the Iraq and Afghanistan War Memorial from Linda McCoy.
Second.
Motion made second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor?
Move to approve the gift donation in the amount of $194.01 to Veteran Services for the Iraq and Afghanistan War Memorial from the patrons of Bill's Barbershop.
Second.
Motion made second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor?
Bill's Barbershop is killing this. Every, every meeting, they get a big pot.
Move to approve a gift donation in the amount of $25 to Veteran Services for the Iraq and Afghanistan War Memorial from Constance and John Stather.
Second.
Motion made second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Move to approve the gift donation in the amount of $210 to the ACO for adoption fees from Ian and Andrew Aho.
Second.
Motion made second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion made second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor? Good night, everyone.